Are we all here?
Mayor Walker, we are all here.
Shall I start by reading us out, or?
Yeah, you have to.
I move this council certified by recorded vote to the best of each council member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Second.
All right, Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and I call this meeting to order. All right, Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Payne?
Present.
Mr. Snook?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. McGill?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
All right, Mr. Blair, should we do the amendment now, or after?
Yes, Mayor Walker, I think now would be the appropriate time.
Okay. Counselor Hill, do you have the amendment?
Should I have something, or can I just go with what I think I'm?
You should have it.
Well, right, I would say that right now, you should just, Counselor Hill, after the final matters from the public.
Okay. I am moved to amend the agenda to reflect that council will resume its closed session after the final matters by the public.
And again, do we need to take a?
Yes, ma'am, a second to move the amended agenda.
Ms. Thomas, is there a second?
Second. Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and now we'll have a moment of silence.
Do we need to adopt the agenda as amended?
I think the motion, in effect, would cover that.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to have a moment of silence. Ms. Thomas, could you just send me an email with the agenda and the notes again, please?
Okay.
Thank you. So next, we should have the, any recognitions or announcements?
I would like to make an announcement. There have been a number of inquiries about whether or not the city has put aside funds for dealing with our Confederate monuments coming up, and did want to reassure and remind people that a few months ago, when we were designating our surplus from last year, that we had put $400,000 aside, and that money still remains.
Okay, are there any other announcements? No, all right.
Okay, so. Mr., I'm sorry, Mayor Walker, I was going to ask you, or Mr. Blair, where we should, because we added the boards and commissions to our closed session agenda, we need to announce that, so I can't remember where on this agenda we want to do that.
It's on there after recognitions.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm using an old version, I have a printed version, apologies.
Okay. So, no other recognitions or announcements? All right, so then you can make the board announcement.
I move that council appoint Philip C. to the Police Civilian Review Board.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Ms. Thomas, could you take a vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, that carries 5-0 in favor of appointing the board appointment. So next, we have the consent agenda, Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, one, minutes, May 13th and May 18th, City Council meetings. Two, resolution and appropriation, resolution adopting the budget and City Council amendments for the city of Charlottesville for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, and providing for the annual appropriation of funds for such fiscal year, second reading. Three, appropriation, appropriation for Department of Human Services fund balance for the pathways, community resource hotline, $400,000, second reading. Four, appropriation, supplemental state funding for the Children's Services Act, $880,522.88, first of two readings. Five, appropriation, Department of Social Services additional funding for adoption assistance, $625,000, first of two readings. Six, appropriation, Appropriation of Care's Act funding, designed to provide emergency assistance for Charlottesville area transit and jaunt, total funding $7,143,582. CAT receiving $5,357,686, and jaunt $1,785,896, first of two readings. Seven, ordinance, taxi cab driver ordinance amendment, first of two readings.
Mayor Walker, we do have several people that have raised their hand to speak about the consent agenda.
Next. So, is there anyone, oh yeah, well, you just told me, sorry, I'm going to get it together. Yeah, so we're for the public comment, Mr. Will.
Great, our first speaker is William Elder. Mr. Elder, you're live with City Council, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, my name is William Elder. I am here tonight to talk about the taxi registration window being closed at the Charlottesville Police Department. I would like the city attorney to come up with a plan, a solution to reopening the service window at the Charlottesville Police Department, so that new taxi driver registration can still take place. Also, I would like the city attorney to come up with a plan or solution to keep the Charlottesville Police Department service window open if this virus is seasonal, or if it becomes a way of life, or if Virginia goes back on stage zero lockdown. The taxi industry, rideshare companies are on the essential business list. The Charlottesville Police Department service window is an essential process to my business. That's all that I have, I appreciate for your consideration to these matters, and I thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, next is Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're live with City Council, you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, my name is Nancy Carpenter, here in Rosehill neighborhood, and I wanted to comment on the city budget that you are adopting tonight. There is one line item that I have recently, and I'm sorry that I've kind of late to the game, but has really stood out to me in light of the tremendous emotional trauma that we are dealing with as a nation, when it comes to the $300,000 that you have appropriate, or will appropriate, may appropriate for the School Resource Officer program. I'd like for you to hopefully pull that out as a line item, and talk about how that $300,000 might, you know, as a resource, might better be used for the community, the folks that, you know, that have, I have asked about it, about their experiences of their children, their experiences. I know that there were school resource officers back in the day when my son was in public school, not of this county or city, and I think that there with the resulting budget issues with the pandemic, that there are certainly more stronger needs for that funding than for school resource officers, because, you know, they haven't been in school for a while, you know, and questionable, I mean, you know, everybody talks about school opening up in the fall, but nobody has talked about how do you get kids to school in a socially distant way. So I think that there are some severe questions that need to, or at least, if not this fiscal cycle, the next fiscal cycle, about defunding that program and finding a more deeper way of connecting with the community with that kind of funding, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, next is Chris Meyer. Chris, you're on the City Council, you've got three minutes.
Good day, Mayor, councilors, and city staff. Regarding the next year's fiscal budget, thank you for ensuring that the school system's operation budget for the upcoming year was protected and added upon during this fiscally challenging time. I hope when the school reconfiguration budget discussion arises in the near future, that similar fiscal support will also be given at that time. Second, if personal cuts, personnel cuts do become necessary in the future, I want to remind the council of a former employee that continues to be handsomely while doing no actual work. Former interim city managers' salaries should be the first to be cut, and I would suggest doing so now. Alternatively, you could ask his current employer, the CFA Institute, to donate his salary back to the city to make things right. I was speaking then as a citizen and a resident of Price Springs, and speaking now as the executive director of the local energy alliance program, putting literally and figuratively my LEAP hat on, let's say. Regarding the budget, LEAP is the implementer of the Home Energy Conservation Budget Line Item, which was cut from the capital improvement budget for the upcoming fiscal year. LEAP still has some of the previous year's funding for use to service low-income residents with home energy savings improvements. However, I did not apply for the Vibrant Community Fund, because I had assumed we would be receiving that home energy conservation allocation. Thus, I'd like to ask for that Vibrant Community Fund allocation process to be reopened to those organizations and agencies that had not previously applied, and can respond to COVID-19 related challenges. LEAP would like to serve more low-income residents being impacted by COVID-19 with the utility bill saving measures. We would, however, we would need access from the Vibrant Community Fund in order to do so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, next to speak is Andy Orban, and before I bring him on, just a reminder, if you're on the webinar, you can click the raise your hand icon to get in line to talk about the consent agenda, and if you're on the telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Mr. Orban, you're on the City Council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, good evening. Like Nancy, I'm also commenting on the budget that's on the consent agenda, and specifically the School Resource Officer line item, that the city schools, it's coming out of their budget, this $300,000 per year. The demands from this Saturday's No Justice, No Peace rally included ending the funding for school resource officers, and this is something that is a choice that the city is making. The choice is that the limited funding that the schools have is, you know, a choice that we have to make. Right now, the schools have had to cut some staff, including teachers assistants, there's a Spanish program at Burnley Moran that's been cut. So, you know, there's trade-offs that are being made here, and I would really like to, you know, consider in light of the things we're looking at with police funding, that this line item gets a serious look. If it doesn't happen this year, it definitely needs to be on the conversation for further years, thank you.
Mayor Walker, that concludes the people that have raised their hand.
Okay. All right, thank you, my only comment, I guess, for now would be the, I know that a conversation came up last year about, you know, attempting to establish an MOU with the schools, between the school system and the police department, and, you know, I don't, I wasn't at all the meetings, so I know there's just stuff, information that I don't have, so that I can't comment on, but Chief Brackney was very much in favor of not having officers in the school system doing the discussions that I was a part of. And based on some of the concerns that came up, there was a lot more conversations that needed to, you know, occur. So, Dr. Richardson, you were, I know, a part of those conversations, if you want to shed any light on that discussion?
That is correct, you know, Chief did say that she, you know, would be able to pull the officers out of the schools if needed, but we still have a long way to go in terms of really finalizing what we're going to do, in terms of our relationship with the schools and the SROs. So, that is something that is forthcoming, but right at this moment, we're going to remain where we're at.
And a question, I guess I suppose for the city attorney is, is my understanding correct that it, when it comes to determining specific line items of how expenditures are made in schools, is that something that only the school board has the authority to do?
Yes, Counselor. I'm sorry, in terms of the school board budget, that is their, their sole province, and now, obviously, there's what's called categorical funding from the city council, which can split the funding for schools into seven categories, but in terms of the line item budget for the school system, no, the city council cannot direct the school division on how to expend those funds.
Yeah, that is correct. As Mr. Blair stated, what we do would just provide that transfer. We do have communication with them in terms of the capital dollars, but, you know, that's still mostly in terms of their discretion, what they want to spend, but we do have those conversations with them to talk about the overall expenditures for that given fiscal year. But other than that, you know, the way that they spend their overall operational dollars, we don't have anything to do with that.
And Dr. Richardson, are those, are, I don't, do, is that, do the schools reimburse us for the SROs, or are they, they are just paid through personnel expenses, correct, through the, through the city? Like, they are city employees, and it's just part of their duties, or is it, is there something different?
From my understanding, and from what I know at this current time, is that, you know, it's a, it's a, sort of like, they fund those individuals, but, you know, through the money that we, you know, provide, but we still pay them here as city employees.
So do I understand that as a practical matter, if we were to decide we're going to stop the CSO program, it would have no net effect on our present budget? In other words, that it's essentially a pass-through cost for us? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, but they're still.
Yes, you're on.
Okay, yeah, they're still our employees.
Right.
Okay.
We would have to find something else for them to do, or lay them off?
No, they'll just come back here to work.
All right, are there any other comments? Okay, so we, is there a motion for the consent agenda? And just real quick, we'll make sure that no one else signed up to speak.
Nobody else on the consent agenda, Mayor Walker?
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move the approval of consent agenda.
One second.
All right, Ms. Thomas, would you take both, please? All right.
Did we lose her?
I'm not sure. So, Counselor Snook?
Yes, aye.
Counselor McGill?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
And a yes for me, so that carries, the consent agenda carries five, five-oh. All right, next, we have the city manager's response to community matters on the previous, the May 18th council meeting. Just be a second, so, probably, if you're watching.
Yeah, okay, I'm here, I'm sorry. Real fast, the only item that we, that I have for discussion tonight is the question that Mr. Heinecke had pertaining to, do we subsidize parking for businesses in the parking deck? And the answer is no, we don't, they pay the same amount that everybody else pays.
I think part of, sort of implicit in his question, it seems to me, is, is whether we are, whether the city is basically charging people who park there, an amount that fairly reimburses the city for the expenses associated with the operation of the parking garage, and a secondary question to that is, how are we factoring in replacement costs? My understanding is that we've got a net positive return every year that is supposed to be adding to a fund that would, in theory, allow us to build new parking. Is that correct?
You're correct, but I'll start off by also saying that we, you know, as I mentioned before, we don't subsidize the cost of, you know, the businesses, they pay the same amount that everybody else pays, and then that goes basically to our fund in terms of being able to look at down the road, and being able to look at, being able to expense it from that fund, that enterprise fund dealing with parking, that's the overall goal.
All right.
All right, so could we, we just need a quick, take a quick break, and we'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel, this is Brian Wheeler. I think we're ready to start the meeting again.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right, I call this, um, this quick, wait, Mr. Blairs.
Blair's coming back on and he'll be with us shortly.
All right. All right. And Dr. Richardson?
Uh, present.
Okay. All right, so I call this meeting, um, back to order. And we are, so next up, we have the, um, community matters. And, um, Mr. Willer, do we have citizens, um, who would like to speak?
Like to raise your hand to speak during community matters? Click the raise your hand icon in the Zoom. On the telephone, you can press star nine to speak, uh, during community matters and we will call on folks in order. First up is Tanisha Hudson. Ms. Hudson, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Uh, first off, Brian, you're kind of low, so is it your volume or is it not? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Tanisha. Brian is down low.
Okay, so I just want to touch on a few things because if, if, if this George Floyd situation taught us anything, I think that as a community Charlottesville, the understanding can't keep jumping in and out of this race conversation or this systemic racism conversation or these systemic issues, uh, when it's convenient for the city. We have a serious race issue here in Charlottesville. Had this issue for a very long time. I mean, Lloyd, you just literally tried to answer a question that Dr. Richardson was answering, literally right behind him. And I don't think you know how, like, you trying to tell somebody how to do their job, basically. But I, a lot of you on council have an issue with telling people how to do their job, but it's okay for y'all to sit up there and ask a million questions on if you got a vote or if you need a motion or when it's time to move. So I'm just saying, like, y'all don't understand how y'all perpetuate race, like, race, racism in general here in this city, being white. Y'all don't understand it. When things don't go y'all way, y'all get mad. When you lose your help and your power inside the city, you get mad. When things don't go the way that you anticipate for it to go, you get mad. The news been writing articles about two black people not getting along downtown. Now all y'all friends. I wonder who leaked that information? Because last week, Nolan wrote that all y'all was friends, y'all always mending y'all hearts, holding hands, being friends. So I, we got a new mic signal on council, we all know who it is, she know who she is. We got another capping on council, she knows who she is. Not gonna say no names, because y'all gonna cut me off. But y'all, we have our own issues right here at home. We have a police department that aggressively polices certain neighborhoods and they ain't in none of y'all neighborhood, if y'all white. It's right on this TV right now. But y'all fail to address this type of stuff. You fail to address this type of stuff. Stop trying to tell other people how to do their job and y'all learn how to do y'all job. Because I mean, John Blair, the city attorney, and he a quality, he a Q A person too. Because he should be giving a lot of questions and answers back to questions that come to him. So can we just let people do their job? Uh, y'all, I don't understand what the problem is. We gave y'all opportunity to do y'all job. We give y'all opportunity to do what y'all need to do. Allow other people to do it.
Mayor Walker, next up is, uh, Rory Stolzenberg.
Did that call disconnect or did she hang up?
Um, the three minutes expired and I did not hear her continuing. Did you want me to check and see?
No, you can go ahead, she'll let us know.
Rory, you're on the city council, you've got three minutes.
Thanks, Brian, and thanks, council. Um, I just, uh, I wanted to address a couple of quick points here. Um, one is, uh, I know I'm late for the budget, you already voted on it, uh, but I've been noticing that there's some pretty significant dis- uh, differences in the police budget uh, between the original proposal and the adjustment, uh, where most things were decreased, uh, but police support services, uh, were significantly increased. Uh, and I'm wondering what the details of that were. Um, and, uh, in general, you know, if we can open up, voluntarily open up, uh, that police budget beyond the five line items, um, and really give more detail into what's happening there for transparency for the public. Um, and, uh, to address, uh, Dr. Richardson mentioning, uh, Walt Heinecke's point from last time, um, I think Walt's point, uh, as Lloyd said, as, uh, Councilor Snook said, is exactly that, uh, all of the spots are subsidized. Uh, they're a hundred thirty-five dollars a month now. Um, we have an independent appraisal from twenty sixteen, uh, saying that they're worth at least a hundred sixty-five dollars a spot, uh, up to two hundred for the reserved ones, uh, multiplied by a thousand spots is hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Um, and the people who were, were, uh, leasing those spots are, uh, predominantly, uh, uh, downtown, uh, residents and businesses, uh, who have the means to pay more. And in fact, we know that we're underpricing them and subsidizing them, uh, because there's been a waitlist for years. Uh, we have a, an amount of spots to sell, uh, and we voluntarily price too low so that too many people want to buy them. Um, and so in doing so, we're giving up hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in revenue. Um, and I hope you consider that as we, uh, move forward with this new garage you just approved.
All right, thank you. Just well quick, go ahead.
We're not subsidizing any of the spaces. Uh, they could be much higher, but as we talked about before, we do have people in the community who work at the different businesses downtown who were trying to make it reasonable for them to be able to afford parking in our parking deck as well as employees who pay to be able to park in the parking deck. I just want to let everybody know that we are not subsidizing parking spaces.
All right. And just for the community, I could not hear the, um, timer in council chambers. I do have my phone with the timer on it, um, now, and I never stop people right at three minutes, um, which I know was problematic, but I do want to at least let people know that we are about to cut them off and that we're, we will, um, and just give them that, um, you know, notice, um, in the future, so Brian, I, I will let you, let you know when we're, you know, at that time, but I do give people a little bit over just to complete their thought.
Mayor Walker, next up is Hannah Hennessy. Hannah, you're on the city council? And you just need to unmute your microphone?
Sorry about that, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, I am representing, um, Carlita Thompson, a community member, and, um, I'm going to read a letter that she and I drafted to the police department. If you'll just give me a minute to pull it up. Um, first and foremost, we want to say that the community, um, and ourselves are praying for the safety of all Charlottesville area police officers, and we appreciate the service and work that they do every day that often goes unnoticed. The last few weeks and most recent days have really thrown the whole nation for a loop. Recently, a statement was released from the police department regarding the outrage and disappointment in the recent events that took place with Mr. George Floyd. While Chief Brackney's statement is absolutely appreciated, we feel the department can identify and conduct itself as expressly anti-racist. We hope the police department responds internally to the crisis of racism by engaging in meaningful training. Meaning, meanwhile, the average citizen needs reassurance that CPD is on our side. Um, so we have a proposal, and the proposal is that in the coming days, the Charlottesville police would be, uh, allowed to wear or display some sort of visual message of we hear you, we see you, or simply Black Lives Matter during their patrol or surveillance. This visual representation could be a shirt, a headband, an armband, poster, or something, anything that, uh, could be small but infinitely meaningful. A team of volunteers from the Charlottesville community is ready to supply the department with materials, and we understand that, um, the police department collaborates with a designer, um, to work on designs for such a thing. Um, we truly believe this small gesture could change the entire atmosphere, and Charlottesville could be an example to other cities that this is not a people versus police issue, but we're all in this together. A problem for one is a problem for all. This is the message being spread and being supported so far by the police departments in Atlanta and Cincinnati. I hope you join us. Um, so thanks for listening to our proposal. Um, I'm really not sure the city council has everything to do with police matters, but, uh, we thought we would bring this up here just to, uh, raise awareness and try to form a bond between the community and the police.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Jennifer.
Just one, um, quick, is Myra Anderson on? Is one of, is she one of the hands raised?
I do not see her in the webinar at the moment. Now, is, is possible, do you, do you think she could be on telephone?
No, I don't know, she just pre-registered, so I'm trying to get a, um, an appearance now, but we can continue until I hear.
Yep, Myra, if you are listening on the telephone, you can press star nine and I'll know it's you and we'll bring you into the, the meeting. Mayor Walker, next up is Jennifer Koch. Jennifer, you're on the city council.
Thanks, Brian, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Uh, I am Jennifer Koch, and I'm here representing Seaville Plans Together. Uh, this is an effort led by the Department of Neighborhood Development Services along with a consultant team, and I'm representing the consultant team tonight. So Seaville Plans Together is the name of a process that includes updating the comprehensive plan document and then updating the zoning ordinance. Uh, as part of this update to the comprehensive plan, we're investigating how equity and affordability can be better addressed in, uh, this long-term planning document. And that includes a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, one is a specific look at strategies related to housing affordability, um, as well as acknowledging the history of planning and zoning in the city and in the nation, which includes a discussion around the fact that planning and zoning have historically been used in Charlottesville and, and many other places to create and maintain racial segregation. Um, so this is a process we want as many, as much participation in as possible. We want to be inclusive and welcoming, um, and hear from everyone, especially those who have been marginalized or generally might not usually participate in city planning processes. Um, and so there's more information on the project website, which is seavilleplannsthegether.com. But I want to give a brief, um, update here, um, as far as what's going on right now. Um, we're in this first series of conversations for this project, um, through the end of June, um, and we're, we're trying to engage with people. Um, it's happening differently than it happened than we, than we planned originally due to COVID. We had a plan to kickoff, um, in late March and into April with a lot of small discussions in the community, meeting people face-to-face, um, and answering questions. So we've had to move to a virtual environment for now, as we have in, in many places such as this meeting. Um, and I, I won't go into the different opportunities, but we have had, um, webinars, which were recorded and are available online, and we have small group discussions, um, going on that people can register for. And I want to make sure to mention, there's a survey available on our website. Um, it's available through June twenty-fourth, and it's available in English and Spanish. There's also a toll-free number people can call, it's eight three three seven five two six four two eight. You can get a brief project overview in English or Spanish and let us know if you have questions. Lastly, there's also a steering committee meeting tomorrow night that anyone can register to attend. So this is just the first step in the process, and I would welcome any of you or any community members listening to please, um, get involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Chris Meyer. Chris, you're back on with council, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the mayor, councillors and city staff again. Um, first I want to say to my neighbors of color, please accept my acknowledgement that we have systemic racism that needs to be addressed, and my hope that we can rid ourselves of it in the near future. To the councillors, many of your constituents and lower-income constituents work for U V A directly or through contractors such as Aramark, and were recently laid off and furloughed while dozens of U V As executives continue to earn salaries of hundreds of thousands of dollars. I do not know the exact percentages, but it's probably probable that many of those laid off and furloughed were disproportionately African-American, especially the Aramark. laid off and furloughed were disproportionately African-American, especially the Aramark employees. Additionally, I learned at the Housing Advisory Committee meeting last week that it appears UVA did not respond to a request by the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless to help with the housing of 30 high-risk homeless people by using some of the dozens, if not hundreds, of empty dorm rooms on its campuses. Meanwhile, and at the same time, sorry, scarce city emergency response money has been helping pay for these 30 homeless people to be lodged in a local hotel at a cost of $70,000 a month. While UVA's health systems, medical capabilities is an asset to this community during COVID-19, in many other areas, UVA is not being a good neighbor to your city residents and constituents. I hope you councillors and city staff can engage UVA more actively to secure the systemic changes necessary for them to be a better neighbor in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Angela, and Angela, I'm usually not calling on you, so I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but Angela with the Legal Aid Justice Center. Angela, you're live with council. Go ahead.
Thank you, Brian. This is Angela Cholphy with the Legal Aid Justice Center. I'm here to speak to the Vibrant Communities Fund allocation, though I just want to say that I appreciate all the speakers who have lifted up the cause of racial equity in their comments. Turning to the Vibrant Communities Fund, we greatly appreciate having the opportunity to provide council and staff an update on how the COVID-19 pandemic is impacting both our operations and the need for our services. So thank you. Of course, we appreciate that over the last week, the environment in which you are being asked to make decisions has changed yet again, as communities all over the country express their pain and outrage and demand liberation from racist oppression. As you make decisions tonight and over the next few weeks about how to allocate nonprofit funding, I implore you to recognize that the original process for funding did not effectively account for racial equity, and this is something that you have recognized in previous meetings. As a result, certain programs for whom racial equity is an explicit goal did not receive enough consideration in the process. The Legal Aid Justice Center would like to lift up the proposals of organizations that promote racial equity, such as CINBARRAS, the FAR intern program, and the Community Investment Collaborative. We, using the language of the rubric, we hope you will agree that these programs are essential to the struggle for racial equity in the city of Charlottesville. And of course, we also want to lift up our own racial equity proposal. We continue to posit that the support that LHC provides to low-income residents' efforts to advocate for racial equity is both exemplary in quality and at least important to the success of those efforts, though we put those essential programs that I listed, CINBARRAS, FAR, and CIC ahead of our own. Strengthening nonprofits that seek to build power and wealth in communities of color and explicitly embrace racial equity as an animating feature of their work should be a top priority for council at any time, but particularly at this time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on the city council. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Carpenter, city resident. Trying to keep my thoughts together here, I need to recognize that I stand on the ground where I am, that is stolen Monakin land, and I live in a country that was built on the backs of enslaved black people. I also want to say that I too, as a community resident, along with Chris Meyer, am disappointed at UVA's stance when it comes to being a good player in our community. I don't understand that a university that was so closely aligned with the eugenics movement, that was so closely aligned with stealing black bodies out of the grave to do experiments or to do whatever they did, that took so long to even acknowledge their connection to the deep Confederacy, would not think that it would be a good idea to utilize a few dorm rooms, because we know, or at least in my opinion, we know that some of those students are not going to be back in the fall immediately, and it's not going to be a long-term thing. I think this was supposed to be, you know, maybe a way of getting them off the street and especially out of harm's way, should we face any of the repercussions for police brutality, and especially tonight in light of what that moron who is squatting at 1600 Penn Ave just did and said. We got by Saturday with a good, good organizational infrastructure. I don't know if that organizational infrastructure will ever be able to hold back if our military decides to do a Kent State and fire on unarmed peaceful protesters. So I'm really disappointed that we couldn't take the time to, to, to look at those who are most vulnerable, who represent the minority race in this community, but they are the majority who seem to be suffering the ravages of the challenge of homelessness and also our carceral system. So I, you know, I'm really disappointed. I'm sure that some of you worked really hard if you were at the table trying to convince them to do that, but I think it's another dark stain on UVA's legacy in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next up is Walt Heinecke. Walt, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Thanks, Brian. Members of city council, Dr. Richardson and Mr. Blair, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I first wanted to say, I really, as a citizen, I really, really appreciated the mayor's statement about justice for George Floyd, justice for Biona Taylor, and justice for Ahmaud Arbery. Those words were very impactful and very meaningful, and I think mean a lot to us as citizens in terms of the direction that we're going, especially when other leaders are not making such strong statements about the need for justice, racial justice in the country and in this community. So I, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for your, for your strong words, and I appreciated them very much. I think our task now is to figure out how to translate that sentiment into policies and change in Charlottesville. There's a lot of people in Charlottesville who have lost faith in the police department. There's a lot of talk about abolishing the police department. And I think in those sentiments are, are some really clear messages about making some pretty significant changes and reforms in policing. What we can do now, and what you could do now, I think, is really important, and I'd like to urge you, since the circumstances have changed very radically, to rethink your decision in November about the bylaws and the ordinance for the Charlottesville Civilian Review Board, Police Review Board. I think it's time for us to go back to the August submission and rethink about how to give that PCR B stronger, more teeth and stronger authority and community oversight. I think that was delivered to you in August. Three of you in your campaigns during the campaign season discussed your commitment to those original bylaws, and I'd like you to rethink that and recommit to that. So I think it's important for us to think about what we can do. Secondly, I think we could take another look at the DMC report and ask some questions about whether or not the police department really delivered and shared data so that we know what's going on in the police department's part of the disproportionate minority contact with the judicial system. I think there are some unanswered questions there and some problems. Third, I think you could take a really good, hard look at the police budget. I personally don't want my tax money going to the police department to buying military equipment, more surveillance equipment, and increasing their ability to surveil especially people of color in this, in this community. So I think there are things that we can do to turn those intentions that we're all talking about now for racial equity in policing into actual policies and actual action in this community in an attempt to make sure that we don't lose further trust of the community with, with the police. On another topic, on another topic, just quickly.
Walt, that's your time.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just, and that was from when I started to press the button, that was three minutes and 38 seconds, so I just wanted to share that. And I'll, and I used to watch the clock in council chambers. I hadn't been doing it here, and it's presenting to be a challenge even today, so I'll say that, but I'll figure, figure that part out. But what I'll say about the statement is that, you know, Chief Brackney had prepared a statement and was going to issue it. Council got that notification around, I think it was 5:04 PM Friday, and I thought, I responded to the statement that I thought it needed to be more than Chief Brackney. Again, it's Friday, it was late, I told Dr. Richardson that I, you know, thought that it should, that we should join the statement. So Dr. Richardson and I even joined in on her statement. It wasn't something that was planned, it was something that was last minute, and it took me a while even to get my thoughts together and figure out exactly what I wanted to say, and so they waited on me for quite a while to even, and that's how it ended up being posted so late. And so that is how that statement came to be, and council didn't, we didn't have notification. I just happened to be on the computer when that came through, so I was able to, to respond to it. The other councillors have stated their support, and have even asked if they needed to sign on to those statements or issue their own, Counselor Snook sent that email the next morning after thanking us for issuing, you know, the statement. So there was broad support for the message that went out, and so I just wanted to make that clear of how that process happened Friday.
If I could just comment briefly on the CRB piece of it, I know this is, it continues to come up. You know, I've said it before at previous council meetings, said it in meetings with several people. You know, I do think we could benefit from trying to go back to the original bylaws and working through what isn't allowed under state law and restrictions, what's not, and getting to a place consensus there. But, you know, we've had this conversation as a council many times, that's not where the majority of council is at, so I understand their perspective, and we just have to move forward. And right now, in this budget, there is still funding to hire that first staff position for the CRB. The board, after tonight's meeting, the board is finalized and will be able to begin meeting, and then the plan that the majority of council has consensus on is for, once that board begins to come together, then that initial board can begin to examine as they begin to operate what resources they need, and that board does have the ability to modify or change the bylaws, but I just wanted to provide an update that that is a path forward that a majority of council had agreement on and will be continuing to move forward in that direction.
I think it's more accurate to say that they have the ability to ask us to modify their bylaws rather than they have the ability to modify their own bylaws. Am I right?
Yes, I mean, I think that is more technically correct.
And that's where I still am. I think that it's very important for us to have the CRB, I think it's even more important that the community hasn't come on board with, that even a CRB is a very reactive, you know, organization, looking at something related to equity, and the Equity Office that I've asked for, that is a more proactive measure. Even with that said, I fully support the CRB, and what we've said all along is that the new board members can tell us how they function best once they meet. We appointed the final board member where we were that was on the next council agenda. We did that during our closed session today, and we intend to authorize for the PCR B to begin to meet, and so that they can start having these conversations and work with Dr. Richardson and his team to get a, you know, executive director for that department up and running. So it is our intention to hear from them what they, what they say they need. In terms of the second position, I still feel like we need to have, one, wait for them to hear, wait to hear from them about what they believe their needs are, and then have that conversation also with Dr. Richardson on how closely maybe the positions that's already in the police department mirror that, and then what's the next step. All right. All right. Mr. Willer, is there someone else signed up?
Yes, Mayor Walker, our ninth speaker is Tim Wallace. Tim, you're live with council. Go ahead.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I also wanted to address the CRB, and I'll try to do so very quickly, because I realize we've talked about it quite a bit in the last few minutes. The, I wanted to point out that there's, there's a missed opportunity in how the city is funding the civilian review board, and I think it's an easy thing to fix, and I hope that, that if the members of the new civilian review board request this, that the city takes it seriously. And what I want to do is I want to lift up one of the original requests that the People's Coalition and members of the initial civilian review board requested, which is, the initial request for funding was for $190,000, and that number wasn't, wasn't random, it was tied to the police department's budget. They asked for 1% of the police department's budget, and that that be a benchmark for what funding the civilian review board should get going forward. And y'all were so close, you had $150,000, and I'm really thrilled that there was a serious amount of money for the CRB. But I really think that not tying the CRB's funding to the police department's budget is a missed opportunity. There is power in making the decision to tie the amount of funding to the police budget, because it's an opportunity to recognize that the more power you give to the police, the greater the need for oversight of how that power is used. You're so close to 1%, you know, $40,000 more and a non-binding guidance to tie future funding for the CRB to 1% of the police budget would be a powerful statement, especially right now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
All right, and I have to think about that last statement, but I also think how, just trying to process the, again, need to ensure that we are looking at the big picture and that we are funding, you know, change agents, that we're funding initiatives that can truly impact what hundreds of years of oppression has done to the community, and to know that every dollar that you put one place, that you're taking a dollar from another place, and it shouldn't be that way, but at this point, the way that things are working out, that's the way it is. So we have to have a conversation about the entire city budget, where money is allocated, what's its funding, whether it's funded equity-related initiatives, whether we're funding stuff in the way we are funding it, and it's not just one department, it's overall. And how do we look at that? And I think sometimes we get hung up on just this one thing, that it's a really big thing, but we don't look at what are all the things around that is going to make like this community whole. And so that's what I've been doing in these conversations, even as I got a lot of heat last year for people assuming that it wasn't support, when there's nothing anyone can ever- for people assuming that it wasn't support, when there's nothing anyone can ever say to me that I'm not working to make sure that people's lives are enhanced during my time, you know, serving on council in a great way, in every room I'm in, having that conversation about what does justice really look like. So I think it's important just to look at the, you know, look at the whole picture. And that's what we are attempting to do here. Any other comments?
Mayor Walker, could I make a brief comment on, I apologize, my network seemed to cut out during the consent agenda, but there was a comment about accepting taxi cab driver applications. And right now, Dr. Richardson is in charge of city facilities, and he's issued his order about the closure of this building, and that does affect the Police Department. And certainly, I'll let him speak to that, but it's my understanding that the city will open phased approach, including our facilities, and that that would really control when the police services taxi cab permit process can continue. And it's really tied to the coronavirus and the city manager's declaration of emergency and eventually reopening the building.
Yeah, that would be part of our phased approach in terms of us reopening when we get to that point. But we still have ways to go. One thing that we did, and that was with tonight, is had the first reading of that particular amendment to that ordinance to be able to allow taxi drivers to be able to get that licensure that they need throughout the year up until that cutoff date of December 31st, to my correct, Mr. Blair.
Yes, we did. Tonight, the first reading now permits a kind of a rolling basis during the year. You don't have to meet a certain cutoff date, although you're.
Because the previous ordinance before we did this amendment was very confusing for everyone. And, you know, after speaking to Mr. Elder, we wanted to try to come back and do something that would help him with the issue that he was having in terms of getting that licensure. So this is a step in the right direction, and this gives him more of an opportunity to be able to provide more of his drivers with opportunities to get the licensure.
All right. Any other comment?
I think, I think someone on the phone just raised their hand to speak.
And Mayor Walker, that's William Elder who spoke about the taxi issue earlier. And I can bring him on if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, he could speak again during public comment.
Mr. Elder, you're back on. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I was listening to the comment that was just made about the taxi window being opened for registration and the update in the code. The code reads that all previous drivers must register from or before March 1. That is what the code reads. It has always been like that?
Yeah. So we just voted on the first reading of the changes for that, which now says.
That it expires on December 31st. You can get that.
That is for previous drivers. That is for drivers that had registered that previous year. So if we're talking about 2019 and 2020, that is speaking to drivers that registered in 2019 that would need to have registered before March 1. You have a period of time from January 1 to March 1 to register and renew as a previous driver. And if you go further in the code, it says that for anyone else, they would have to come and register with the Chief of Police, which is the taxi registration at that window. So the code is in place. That is how the registration process has been taking place for the last 12 years. And so that is the concern of the council tonight. But that isn't the ultimate goal of myself. Myself is to get the window open so that there's a solution to when this continues and like, you know, the last 90 days.
Does he, where did he go?
Mr. Elder, you're still on the phone, right?
Yes, I'm still here.
And Mayor Walker, I'll just let you know, Chief Brackney is also on the webinar and has raised her hand.
Okay. Well, let's just let him finish. Mr. Elder, are you finished?
Well, I mean, you know, we were kind of, you know, having a conversation. So I'm finished for now. But yeah, of course, there's more to say because that window is not open. And the window should have been open, you know, weeks after the pandemic happened. They should have had a solution to it. And instead, the solution was to say no. The window has been open for business the last 12 years for new taxi driver registration from the beginning of January to the end of December. And that is how the code reads. That is how the process has been happening at that window.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'll let Chief Brackney, I mean, I spoke with Mr. Elder too. And I'll just say that in terms of what we're thinking about, I know the issue came up here because apparently there were more drivers who, they needed more drivers based on, I guess, the demand at that time. But Dr. Richardson, I hope that you will all continue to weigh the request against also the safety and well-being of the employees, you know, too, when we're trying to figure that out. And Brian said that Chief Brackney was on to speak.
And that's exactly what we've been trying to do, is to make sure, well, most importantly, ensure that our employees are safe. And like I said, once we get to the back to looking at phasing in different departments, come back to that and look at that again. But as you mentioned, you know, the whole thing was about safety.
Chief Brackney, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mother Mayor and council. Actually, this ordinance was brought before you as part of a resolution to attempt to assist Mr. Elder. In fact, the ordinance was extremely confusing and limited opportunities for individuals to renew licenseings after or before a certain date. I mean, and also too, although it may have been a practice, it actually, we're codifying what was possibly a practice that may have been a practice that was in violation of the code. So what we've done, when I spoke to Mr. Blair, is what was the opportunity to increase applications throughout the entire year so that if an individual wanted to get a license, they could get one, but also to remove a barrier from an individual who may not have had the opportunity to renew under the previous codes by the March 31st deadline. Also too, I can appreciate Mr. Elder wants our services to be open, but services throughout the entire city are restricted based on the COVID-19 pandemic. And he is correct. Things may have been done for the past 12 years differently, but we've never had to deal with a pandemic at this point. And we would hope that the community would understand that the health and safety of all of our employees is as important as the services we are attempting to deliver.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Willer, is there anyone else?
Mr. Elder raised his hand again, but there's nobody else with their hand raised.
Okay. So Mr. Elder, it's just one time we have matters by the public at the end of the meeting, and you're welcome to come back on at the end of the meeting to speak. All right. And so we are at our eight o'clock, so we'll take a 15-minute break before we resume. All right.
It is Counselor Payne, is he on? Okay.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, I call this meeting back to order. Next up, we have an ordinance, it's the, it's one reading and it requires a four-fifth vote. It's appropriation for the remaining 250 from the fiscal year 20 real estate tax relief for the elderly and or disabled and the Charleston Housing Affordability Program to fund a one-time COVID-19 real estate tax relief grant.
And Mr. Vandiver, if he'll turn his mic back on.
And our treasurer.
Um, well, I mean, yeah, I can't really add much to what the mayor just said. There's $250,000, give or take, left over from FY20 real estate tax relief in CHAP. There had been some discussion about trying to apply that to some low-income housing needs. And so we were asked to come up with a proposal, and this is it. You know, it's, we would essentially use the population of applicants that we've already got sort of in the can from the CHAP program and the Real Estate Tax Relief Program. And this would give them sort of a shot in the arm on the first half. You know, sort of to get through a little bit here, there'd be two levels of grants, $250 and $500. So basically, it's, you know, it's in y'all's court. If you want to go ahead and do this for this purpose, or did you want to hold on to that $250,000 for the end of the fiscal year? Jason, you got anything you want to add? Probably not.
No. And I'll just, you know, say that everyone knows that this is something that I've been really passionate about expanding and figuring out how to make, you know, this as progressive as a program as we can under some of our restrictions, under the state law. And this is one of the ways that we can ensure that homeowners who income at this point is under $55,000, that they receive some relief. We started out the year having discussions about expanding the program. And because of the pandemic and the financial climate that we're in, it was advised that we not, that we consider not expanding the program this year. And so this would provide the homeowners a little bit more relief in the categories of $25,001 and up than they would have received. And this is not new funding, this is funding that was allocated for this purpose last year and that was remaining. And so I just want to make that point clear also. Any other, are there any questions, comments?
Um, not a question, I guess a comment, you know, I plan on supporting this and I guess the only question to me is, is something you've mentioned, Mayor Walker, at many meetings in the past, is just how do we, how do we work towards a point where we get, we're able to evaluate the relative impact of investments in each area? Because again, I support this and I think there's plenty of reason to think that this is one of the most impactful investments we could make. I mean, $500 going, you know, in a grant to households under $25,000 is in some ways, you know, a kind of economic stimulus in some limited way for that population. But just thinking, you know, just something I thought about in this proposal is like, how do we evaluate this $200,000 going here versus another investment? As well as the fact that over 60% of the city are renters, not homeowners. And, you know, the questions around renter relief and the pressures that will be there, which is a much bigger issue, but it was just something I'm thinking about in terms of how do we, how do we measure whether, you know, using limited money is the most impactful way? But again, I think there's reason to believe this is very impactful and then plan on voting for it, but.
And of course, I agree of what hopefully a measurements and solutions task force will turn into, because it's very important for us to be able to, you know, have the greatest impact based on the limited amount of funding that we have.
I agree, that was just a statement I was going to make, was hoping that that, that group will be able to give us some clarity there. So I agree, and I will support this.
Well, that group won't be able to, you know, do it for this.
No, I'm just saying like us looking from a more measurements-based perspective with everything that we're doing and how we're looking at all the funds that we're allocating from various different programs.
Yes, and this was, the goal of this is to hopefully have homeowners who are able to figure, you know, not get some relief while they're trying to figure out how to pay the thousands of dollars in taxes that they have to pay on very limited income.
Right, and the big assist this kind of gives is, the CHAP program in particular is, they don't see that until the second half. So this is going to help folks kind of get by on the first half to where they can get, you know, the injection in the second half.
And right now, we have a lot of immediate needs, so.
Yep.
And we also started the discussion about merging those two programs and figuring out, so Todd and Jason will be bringing a proposal to us at some point for consideration to try to streamline both of those programs and just make it a little bit easier for staff and citizens.
Appreciate the effort.
No, thank you. So if there's no, are there any further comments or discussion? And is Counselor Snook on here?
Yes, I am. I had to drop off a second, I had two competing feeds for some reason, but I'm back.
Okay.
I was off for about 30 seconds.
Okay, all right, so.
I'll make the motion.
Mayor Walker?
Yes, Ms. Wood.
Just one quick on the Q and A function, it, Ms. Carlita Thompson asks, can you repeat the name of that program again, please? And just, this is part of the item, it's both, for Ms. Thompson, is both the Charlottesville Housing Affordability Program and the Real Estate Tax Relief for the Elderly and Disabled Persons Program, both of those programs. I just wanted, based on the Q and A.
Okay, thank you, Mr. All right.
So I move we adopt an ordinance providing one-time grants to Charlottesville Housing Affordability Program and the Real Estate Tax Relief for the Elderly and Disabled Program recipients.
I second the motion.
And just one more point before I call that I did forget, there potentially will be about $130,000 remaining at the end of the year, because the $0 to $25,000, that first tier, they will get the $500,000 relief. And right now, hopefully, that is money that we can either do something similar with, something different, or use towards merging the two programs into this new, whatever it become, there may take some additional funding to do that. And so just wanted to make note of that, so when that comes up later.
Well, shouldn't we also look at maybe saving some of that since it's based on your taxes from the year before, so that next year's demand might be higher as the, as the 2020 taxes are being done, so that more people might qualify?
Yeah, so that's why I said we could do something similar, something different. It's looking like based on the initial review that we may need some extra funding to change. The Real Estate Tax Relief Program right now is, applications are due by March 1st and the CHAP program applications are due by September 1st, and so.
Well, May 1st, no, September 1st, you're right, got too many programs, September 1st.
And so there may be an increased initial cost for trying to bring those two programs together.
But like the mayor said, we anticipate about $130,000 in savings in FY21 because of this, because some, a lot of folks are going to be getting $500 of their CHAP grant in the first half instead of the second half, so there will be savings in the second half.
And in that first tier, they get 100% of their taxes, so they would, if they receive the 100% in December, they would essentially be getting $500 more. And since we can't pay them, nor do we want to more for this particular program more than their tax amount, that money would be saved. And there was a lot of discussion about what to do upfront, but it was decided that this was the best, you know, decision to be able to be helpful during this first year.
Yep.
All right.
It's just time for.
Ms. Thomas?
Okay, Mr. Payne? Can you hear me?
Yes. Me?
Yes, now I can. Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
All right, so that carries 5-0. And next up, we have general business, and I feel like I'm forgetting something. Thank you, yes.
We'll get on it.
Todd and Jason, we appreciate all the efforts you put into trying to, you know, figuring this out.
Sure thing, we'll get on it.
All right, thank you, have a good evening.
Night night.
So is there any general or other business? No, all right, so next we have the second matters by the public. Mr. Wheeler, if we have anyone who is ready, who would like to speak?
Mayor Walker, we do have some hands raised, and if you'd like to speak under Other Matters by the Public, click the raise your hand icon. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. And Mayor Walker, first up is William Elder. Mr. Elder, you're back on the city council, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, with all due respect, can I come back too? I'm, I'm in the middle, one thing that I've got to take a break for 30 seconds for. Uh, yeah, with all due respect, can I come back to, I'm, I'm in the middle of one thing that I've gotta take a break for thirty seconds for. Hello?
Mayor Walker, did you hear that question?
Yes, that's fine.
Can we come back to, to me, please?
Yep, we'll come back. Uh, next up is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with counsel. Go ahead.
Oh, hello again, everyone. I wasn't quite finished the first time. So I just wanted to reiterate the race issues that we have in Charlottesville, the way that you guys continue to perpetuate white supremacy in the city government. I don't think you go, I don't think you all get it because like we were here in twenty sixteen before they marched. We were here again in twenty seventeen before they marched. We were here in twenty seventeen after they marched. We're, we were back in the same seat in twenty eighteen. And here we are in twenty twenty because a national murder happened on TV by our police officer. We're back having the same discussions about race. And it gets uncomfortable for some of you white folks because y'all jump in and then y'all jump out of the discussion and you jump into it and you act like you want to do the right thing. Then you give us a little bit, but then you take it back, or then you slap us in the face with it, but then you fall right back to where you were. Like, we really have got to accept that we have a serious race issue, not only in Charlottesville, but in America. You guys allow everybody else to come here and do their job except black people. Nakai had been through bullshit, Wes went through bullshit. Now Dr. Richardson and Letitia going through bullshit and any other black person. I'm pretty sure the director of transportation going through it too. But y'all don't understand the things that y'all do and y'all do it publicly. So y'all can keep saying that this person talked to this person or whatever. Y'all do it so publicly. I just called Lloyd Snook on something he did tonight. Y'all do it so publicly. Brian Wheeler just shut me completely out of asking a question about cab vouchers on three sixty live. I mean, literally live. And then made sure he cut me off tonight. He still ain't learned his lesson. One of the three minutes was up and down. He still cut me off. He ain't give me no warning sound or nothing. I bet y'all won't check him. And, and nae one of y'all that's on this TV screen, from the counselors to anybody in any office, city manager's office, Mr. Blair, the mayor, the count, none of y'all, nae one of y'all still asked me about that FOIA request. Do y'all not care? Do y'all not care? Because that in itself was disturbing. But if it was Nakai emailing somebody, y'all would have made sure that y'all dropped the dime for Nolan to write a story about it. If it was Dr. Richardson responding to somebody, y'all would have made sure y'all dropped the dime for somebody to write a story about it. If it was Letitia responding to somebody or saying something in a meeting, and God forbid if we talk about money or the budget. Y'all make sure that those topics are discussed in the newspaper. But this FOIA request was really kept quiet. I wonder why? Because a white man said it? Because if a black person would have talked that way, he wouldn't have a job. And y'all know that because Maurice is gone. If a black person failed to do their job fully and thoroughly, they get fired. But a whole lot of y'all white people get bad with doing a little bit of nothing all the time or being disrespectful and nothing happened. So see, we have our own race issues right in our own backyard. I'm sorry?
That's, that's your time. It's been three minutes and forty-six seconds.
Okay, you got it, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just comment real quick again on the FOIA request. If there, when FOIA requests go out, we are made aware that they are going out. We are made aware of, you know, potential issues that could come out of the FOIA. So I'll say that one. And that's my, that's my only comment. I have a good comment, but I, that's my, I'll just reserve for later. That's my only comment at this time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor Walker, William Elder. Let's see if he's ready. Mr. Elder?
Yes, I'm, I'm ready. Thank you. Sorry for the, for the delay. So I just wanted to finish up that I am not against the code being more user friendly for all taxi drivers. I just want to encourage everyone, including the chief of police and everybody at the council, to come up with a solution to open up the taxi window, the service window at the Charlottesville Police Department. If a sex offender can come and register for anything at that window, I feel that we are able and we're capable of coming up with a solution to opening up that window safely, especially during stage one. We're gonna be, be in stage two shortly and there's, there's no plan for opening up that window. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor Walker, Walt Heinecke. Walt, you're on with counsel. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're on public comment, right? I had to step away for a minute.
Yes, we're on Matters by the Public.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of things to follow up. On the parking issue, I think what I heard tonight was a matter of semantics. If we're not charging full market rate, and we could be, and we could be charging business owners and wealthy residents a higher amount for those parking spots, we are losing revenue that could be going to the Affordable Housing Fund. So I kind of heard, the answer I heard was sort of semantic. I do understand that there are city employees that park there that do need a subsidy and they should have a subsidy or a lower rate. But if we're not charging full freight for the business owners and the upper income, you know, homeowners in that area, then we are subsidizing parking. So that's, I, I, I heard some semantics there. The other thing I couldn't get to that I wanted to, to explain, express concern about was the issue of affordable housing. And I'm, I'm just really concerned when it comes to rental assistance that we're about to hit a huge bubble. And folks are going to, are gonna be having an incredible struggle to pay their rent. And I think this is gonna lead to a significant amount of more of displacement in Charlottesville unless council can come up with some more creative ways to address that. So I, I hope that you, you can, I know it's a struggle. I know it's difficult right now, but I hope you can give some attention to the affordable, the CAF and the Affordable Housing Fund. And then just lastly, I, I, just to reiterate on the PCRB, I feel like you're kicking the can down the road to the PCRB members. I think you should give them the fullest, strongest version and let them come back to you and say if they want to water it down. But you're the policymakers, you're the ones that set, set the rules for the beginning of the whole thing. We don't want to end up doing what we did with the Human Rights Commission, which is to water it down in the ordinance. So I would really urge you to engage in another discussion about changing that ordinance back to the August version and letting them have the full authority that they can have, the greatest amount of authority they can have, considering what's going on in the country right now. You know, how are we gonna be proactive about stopping what's going on in the country from happening here in Charlottesville? So I hope you'll reengage in a discussion about that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask relative to the CAF funding, I know that this was taken up by the HAC last week. Dr. Richardson, can we anticipate that that recommendation for those programs that Mr. Sales has been working through and has been in discussions with the CAF of a hack about will be in front of council at the next meeting?
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, pretty sure it will be. I am gonna have another conversation with Mr. Sales in the morning about that and see how we can move forward. I know that he's been having some discussions or I think he already has discussions with the council. Okay, yeah, to get those scheduled and going. So yes, it shouldn't be that long. I think it could be next meeting, but we'll discuss that in a moment.
And to, just to provide some background for the, the question from Mr. Heinecke about the, the CAF and its use for rental relief. I'm not sure if you, if you were there or not at the HAC meeting, Walt, but if you weren't, John Sales developed a proposal for using most of the CAF for rental assistance, rental assistance, homeless assistance, as well as some mortgage relief. And so basically, all of the CAF's use for capital projects or longer-term expenditures have been diverted towards addressing these immediate needs. And it was something that was, Mr. Sales had developed, the HAC has heard it, approved it, and will come to us shortly with the money that's in the CAF. I mean, there's no way around it though. I mean, that, that proposal's been developed and will help. But the reality is, is just the amount of existing need there is, particularly as courts begin to, and evictions begin again, is that, you know, we could, we could dump, you know, we could dump much more money into this program, which we don't have the money to do, but it still wouldn't meet all the need. So there are those proposals there, but it is just the unfortunate situation that there's just not enough money available for us as a locality alone to, to meet all of that need.
And I, you know, from the two-two ones that we had with Mr. Sales, the, what he presented, I thought he did a great job and was well thought out and it was attempting to meet the needs of all the particular, you know, particular issues that could come up this time. So I thought it was very thoughtful and hopefully, you know, for the citizens that are, are able to benefit, that it will be helpful to them.
Yeah, I'm look, I'm looking at my notes right now and it will be on the next agenda.
And then, and then just finally, there was four hundred thousand dollars tonight that will be going into some of the city's emergency assistance fund that will also hopefully provide some ability for folks to be able to cover emergency bills that may came up, come up. That had been down to zero and now it'll be four hundred thousand. Still not enough to meet all the need, but.
And that's, you know, really telling. I think the partnership that we had with CACF and the resources that Almar County put in and the four hundred thousand is on top of the eighty thousand that was already in there for us and the hundred and thirty that we allocated, attempting to get that up closer to the requests that were coming in. And we're still a little ways away from that. But as Counselor Payne was talking about the need, they in, you know, a five, six week period allocated more than, I think, three point four million dollars. So, and that was some private donations. The first donation from the university of, well, maybe not first, I don't know if there will be another, but the donation from the University of Virginia, our contribution, the county contributions and some contributions that were for the surrounding counties. And so that need is great and it's just something for us to keep in mind and, you know, while we are trying to figure out how we are gonna, you know, survive this, you know, pandemic and make sure that our citizens are as strong as possible on the other end because we will pay for it one way or the other. And so we can pay kind of upfront and try to prevent families from kind of spiraling out of control for, because due to the crises. Or we can pay for it on the back end with things that people are usually okay with funding and not questioning, which is some of the comments that we've heard about today.
Mayor Walker, we have two others. Don Gathers, you're on with counsel. Go ahead. Don, can you hear us?
Excuse me. Sorry, didn't realize I was muted on my end.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. As we know, we're facing really two pandemics in this country right now. COVID nineteen as well as the continued murder of black and brown people by police officers in other parts of the country and very, we're very fortunate that we don't have, have not had those issues here. But I think that this is an extremely powerful time and an important time to go ahead and get the, the CRB up and off the ground and running to fully fund them. Also to go ahead and to reinstitute the original bylaws as has been asked by previous, previous callers and previous statements have been made. Those bylaws really had some real teeth to, to the, to the committee and gave them the real opportunity and some latitude to do some real work in and for the community. So I would urge you all to please consider that we, we go back to the, the, the original bylaws, the original statements. And let's just do something good and powerful and viable to the community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, next is Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, you're on the council. Go ahead.
Thanks. Sorry, I'm a little distracted. I just saw all the videos that Richmond Police just tear gassed a huge open crowd way before curfew for absolutely no reason. And obviously, across the country, we're seeing that. And just want to acknowledge that. Sorry. So, and I, I think it's maybe also important to acknowledge that Charlottesville Police did better this weekend and didn't escalate things and I think actually did their jobs pretty well. And I hope that means, you know, we were on, they took their first step towards having a more just system. But I guess to my, the point I was supposed to have, I got some notes here. For parking, if we, if we're underpricing it and leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the, of revenue on the table, that is a subsidy and Dr. Richardson mentioned that it's to make it more affordable. And I think that might make sense as a goal. So maybe instead of kind of handing it out to everyone who has a spot, releases one, you make it a targeted program. And I think, you know, even if you made it available for anyone under AMI median income and charge everyone else market rate, I bet in those garages where you're paying less than, or where you're already paying a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month, instead of going to the free parking just a few blocks away, I bet just a tiny fraction of, of people with those parking passes will actually use it. And I think it's important to remember that the parking fund, when it was created, it's not just to build new parking. It's also potentially for use for other good work, particularly things related to reducing parking demand downtown, like better infrastructure. So people who don't have cars to rely on and need to rely on other forms of transportation can get around the city better. So, yeah, I hope we'll really think about what our goals for that fund are now. We know it has a seven-figure balance and really think about what our goals as a city are and direct the funds that we have to the places we want to spend them on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Madam, I can make a quick comment about Rory's last comment on parking. We've had a new parking study done about every five years, maybe four years. We had one done back in twenty sixteen that resulted in the plan that got implemented very briefly in twenty seventeen where we put in parking meters and then we took them out right after August twelfth because the downtown business people were saying that it was helping, it was stifling business and making downtown unfriendly. My point is simply that there are some very complex issues of overall philosophy and economic development and all kinds of other things that go into that. If we want to have a, if we want to revisit a parking study, that's fine, but it's not something that we can do in the middle of a budget season.
And I would note that that study said we do not have a parking space problem, only a parking management problem and that there is no time of day, any day. a parking management problem, and that there is no time of day, any day of week, both in Market Street and Water Street garages are at capacity. And in particular, the Water Street garage is very far away from capacity, even at that noontime rush hour. But we have clearly already decided to build a $15 million parking garage.
Okay. Any other comment? No? Alright, so if that's it, we, we are going to go read into the closed session.
Mayor Walker, if I could make a brief program announcement for those watching.
Okay.
We're going to, once council goes into a closed meeting, we will end the broadcast on Channel 10 and on our live streams. We will keep this webinar running. So if anyone wants to tune in at the end, when council comes back and reconvenes and certifies the closed meeting, this webinar will still be running. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
Are we using the link we used earlier?
No.
Alright, I move pursuant to Section 2.23712 of the Virginia Code, that City Council closes open meeting and convenes in a closed session as authorized by Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A1, for the discussion of the performance of the Charlottesville City Manager.
Second.
Right, Ms. Thomas, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Alright, great.
But Brian, we do come back to this link that we used for 6:30.
That's correct. Come back to the 6:30 Zoom webinar link.
Thank you.